Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available at the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and it's streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meetings, video is also available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by asking the pass, or by using the Ask Pasco app. So with that, if we could get the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
She is online supposedly.
Present.
Thank you. Blaisdell?
Here.
Kada?
Here.
Harpster. I believe he's excused tonight, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, Paralus?
Here.
Mayor Potem Grim?
Here.
And Mayor Milne?
I am here.
Thank you. Six here.
So with that, if we get the, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Thank you for that. Yes, I do remember Harpster reaching out to me saying he wasn't going to be here. So with that, we're going to roll to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by the council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. For A, approval of meeting minutes for October 6th, 13th, and October 14th. B, bills and communications approving claims in the total amount of $5,362,870.22 and a write-off totaling $11,752.58. Item C, Resolution Number 4661 and 4662, Road 80 Park Acceptance of Grant and Purchase Agreement. Item D, Resolution Number 4663, Project Acceptance Highland Park South Side Landscape. Number E, Resolution Number 4664, Supplement to Professional Services Agreement with Consoor North America Incorporated for Design Services for the Sylvester Street Overpass Pedestrian Bicycle Access Project. Item F, Resolution Number 4665, Project Acceptance for the Burton Boulevard Soccer Complex Field Lighting. Would, uh, is everybody fine with this or anything you want to move? Not seeing any, so can I get a motion? Mayor Potem Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
So we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim and a second by Blaisdell. So if we get a roll call.
Yes. Um, councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Blaisdell?
Yes.
Kada?
Yes.
Paralus?
Yes.
Grim?
Yes.
And Milne?
Uh, that's a yes.
Passes unanimously, sir.
All right. Thank you for that. So we move on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements, none listed. So I'll bring us to number six, Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after deliberate process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally limit to three minutes each by the mayor. There's a little timer up there. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council inside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county residency into the microphone before providing your comments. Do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment? All right. Yes, let's go with you. Mary Maloney, you're up.
It is on?
It is now.
So how now?
Now it's off. So if you want, if you had to turn it back on, if you could turn it back on.
You want the red light on?
I want the red light on.
Yep, now it's on.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident. As with Spokane selling their dogs for research to WSU Veterinary School since 1975, our animal control, Tri-City Animal Services, TCAS, has been sending our dogs and cats for WSU research, then they're killed, since 4/16 of '03. See animal control rehire Angela Zeiler in the Tri-City Herald, quote, "The dogs euthanized at WSU were ones we would have had to kill anyhow," end quote. Also, Pasco City Attorney Leaker authorized no due process protections at animal control, and now with the usage pay system, a bounty is put on our dogs and cats and a ransom is required to be paid to get our pets out of animal control. See Pasco City Manager report on 10/6, 25, page four, regarding 232 recent animal control cases provide all due process violations and a usage pay fine total. TCAS, Tri-City Animal Control Services, still performs botched, cruel, and barbaric euthanasia methods and has never provided results for the 48 counts of animal cruelty, the stolen $375,000 donated by our veteran in his will, and the missing and/or stolen rainy day funds. See Chambers, Howard, Hernandez, and Zeiler. And with over a half a billion dollar CIP budget made up by our tax dollars, Pasco gives nothing to our homeless people and no funds for a low-cost bayneuter clinic for our dogs and cats, and yet, ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins, now Aquatic Director, is paid nearly $11,000 per month plus his travel expenses, provide his passport entries and the cost for the lazy rivers. For our floodplain, provide a permit number 404 for the sewer station and any development and water contamination reports with ruptured sewage lines, see photos. Provide fines paid by Pasco and spot zoning developers Hayden Homes for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets, see photos. Provide all LID ULID designs for my property include cost start dates, U.S. mail notice to me, and Pasco Communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. Provide contracts and tax dollars paid by Pasco to the following. One, to GMP Consultants with ex-Pasco City Manager Dave Zabel. Two, to ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins and/or his LLC. Three, to the Kerr Law Group and proxies. All requests are for the record via RCW 42.56 and to put Pasco on notice.
All right. Thank you for that. Do we have, all right, Ms. Crawford?
I came here tonight to thank Leo Paralus for his astute attention to a derelict property in our neighborhood, and it's not well, but it's a lot better, better than it was, where maybe a friend of mine who also lives across the street from them, maybe her realtor will show that property because she has been refusing because of the mess in the neighborhood, which is really scary. Okay? And Leo, thank you for listening to my whining and my persistence, because I can kind of be that way sometimes. Rather than come here and complain about the ineffectiveness of some of our code enforcement, I started thinking about the homes in our neighborhood that are not being maintained on the exterior. A lot of these are homeowners, which I found very surprising. First-time homeowners, and I thought, perhaps, let's look for a solution. Yeah, code enforcement is good, but are they aware of the codes? Did they come from a home where yard maintenance, paint maintenance, trash in the trash receptacle was expected, or did they not? Because we're a town of a lot of different cultures. Perhaps, we could, at no cost to the city, hopefully, because we sure can't afford it right now, yoke with some realtors. And currently, we have realtors in our area providing homeowner classes on how to finance, what costs to expect, et cetera, na na. Well, could we get a code enforcement officer in there, or a volunteer from our city council to present to these potential new homeowners what our code is, what our expectations are, and kind of bring them along? Okay, I'm assuming your statisticians would know if these are all first-time homeowners or not. Some people are just going to be chronic offenders, but y'all get paid from our taxes. Property taxes. When Pasco turns back to the bad old days, and there may not be anybody here old enough to remember them, property values were way down. When I was on Planning Commission and City Council, we worked hard to bring Pasco's image back up. I'd really like to see it stay that way. And the cancer from that house spread to next door, I'm just, I was going, oh, okay, because they started piling their trash out on the street, and I'm just going, this cannot be happening. It's cleaned up right now, but we need to stop this cancer. We need to educate homeowners, let them know we're proud of Pasco, and Pasco pride means taking care of what's yours.
True.
Okay, and off-topic, current score, bottom of the six is Mariners three, Blue Jays one. Have a good evening.
All right. Well, thanks for the update and, uh, all right, do we have anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Going once, going twice, going three times, all right. Let's move on to item number seven, Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Do we have anybody that would like to talk about what they did this last week? Let's start off with Councilwoman Blaisdell.
I attended the Hispanic Chamber Spooky Ball with the COPO Board members and the Kalima delegation. It was a night of entertainment from the Kalima students and dancing and singing. Director Rice was also present, and I also wanted to report on the Kalima-Pasco friendship collaboration. The partners include City Pasco, Port Pasco, WSU Tri-Cities, Pasco School District, the UPN Kalima. This continued partnership has opened opportunities for so many different reasons. These students had a dream to come to the United States, and they had the opportunity to tour Pasco Police Department, the Pasco Fire Department, WSU Tri-Cities, the Pasco School District, Port Pasco. Then they also attended the Tara Vida ribbon cutting and toured their facility. They toured a handful of daycares in Pasco while they were here, and they also got to eat and experience what we offer downtown Pasco. Over the last week, I got to spend a lot of time with these remarkable students to hear their story and just to understand things through their eyes. They didn't know what to expect when they got here, but they left here feeling the embrace of our community, all wanting to return back to Pasco in the near future. This is what makes our community so special, the community partners united together to make Pasco a great place to live and visit.
Well, thank you for that report, and thank you for all your dedication and help in the city. I've seen some pictures online, and you were Johnny on the spot, you were everywhere, so thank you for all that. Let's move on to Mayor Potem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. Unfortunately, I was kind of mobile and had to do it on the road on Friday morning for good reason, but anyways, one of the presentations we were given, it was pretty much a business-as-usual meeting, was given by the Cascadia Consulting Group regarding the Regional Climate Change Approach. And I, it was an excellent presentation that they gave, but near the end, when they solicited board member comments, I did speak up on behalf of just meeting the minimum obligations just because of the, the status of the, the climate has been changing for eons, and everything we do has very little effect on it. The whole thing has become so politicized, and really, all it does, all of these initiatives we take advantage of, really just puts a burden on the middle class and families with higher energy costs in their home, higher fuel, fuel costs when we go to the pump, and so it, it was my input that we, that our goal just be to meet the minimum obligations as required by the state, and I was grateful that the City of Kennewick also joined in and felt that that was also the proper approach. So that was that, and then, that was Friday. So then, the day before, we had our quarterly Franklin County Emergency Management Meeting where we just kind of did year-end budgets. We're still trying to work through an issue out at Franklin County, number five. That's kind of been an ongoing issue for a while. Hopefully, we'll bring some resolution to it, but that's what I did this past week on the short week. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for representing the City of Pasco. Let's go with Councilwoman Kada.
Less relevant to Pasco, but I was in El Salvador on a mission trip. That was great. One of the highlights there was visiting the women's shelter. It's the only women's shelter in El Salvador that takes in pregnant women, and so we gave them a baby shower, and that was fun. And so, there was a lot of cool stuff going on there, and El Salvador's great. I think there's a lot of them that would like to come visit us here, but it was a good trip.
All right. We're glad to hear it. I'm not seeing anything else, so let's move on. Item number eight is Hearing and Council Action on Ordinance and Resolutions Related thereto. Item 8A is Public Hearing and Ordinance Number 4794, Rocky Hills Management LP Row Vacation, and we're going to start off with Ms. Director Haley Matson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight before you is a public hearing related to a petition by Rocky Hills Management LP to vacate an unused portion of right-of-way along Road 104 near Magnolia Heights Development. This ordinance, 4794, is an instrument that would formally vacate that portion of right-of-way, and staff recommends that council adopt the ordinance and authorize publication by summary only. Some details first about the site layout here. The map on the, the screen shows the subject area on the west side of Road 104, and this is north of Road 100 within Magnolia Heights. The 60-foot strip originally deeded to Franklin County in 1994 and annexed in 2001 is not currently used for any roadway or pedestrian purposes. And the vacation that is proposed here tonight simply removes a piece of right-of-way that is no longer serving the public and cleans up the boundary for the subdivision shown there on the screen. Going back to the process for the vacation approval criteria, the Pasco Municipal Code outlines four criteria that the city must review prior to approving, vacating a right-of-way, and these are shown on the screen. First, it must not negatively impact traffic or circulation, and given that this is not needed for vehicular or pedestrian access, this criteria is, is met based on staff's analysis. Second, the area must not be planned or needed for future public use, which we've determined is not the case. And third, no property can lose legal or physical access, and this is not creating that situation here. And finally, the action must not harm the public interest. Staff found that this request meets all four conditions that are listed on the screen. It's unused, it's not part of future plans, and all parcels retain access, and the action serves a public benefit by allowing property boundaries. And the portion at the bottom of the slide, I'll touch on here too. There are two additional sections of code that allow council to require survey or compensation. Staff in this case is recommending both those requirements, and the reason being is that the boundaries and the legal description are already well documented, and the applicant has provided substitute right-of-way of equal or greater value as part of the Magnolia Heights plat. And because the vacation primarily corrects a mapping overlap and supports clean property records, the public benefit outweighs the need for an appraisal or payment in this case. So staff is recommending for this vacation that council approve the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Does any member of the dais have any questions for the director? I'm not seeing any, so I guess we're gonna conduct a public hearing?
Correct.
Is there any member of the audience that would like to talk about this? Going once. I guess we got you in the back.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mayloo, and I'm the pastor of Hope Fellowship on 4100, Road 100, which is the, uh, this right-of-way vacation request is the back part of the parcel that, that is on our property. And so, we approve this request, we're, we're for it. It would clear, clean things up, and I, I believe the developer has also expressed the same thing.
Okay.
So I don't need to waste any more time, but thank you.
All right. Sounds great. Do we have any other members of the public that'd make, like to make a comment? Going twice, going three times, all right, so we are going to close the public hearing. And if I could get a motion, Mayor Potem Grim?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 4794, vacating a portion of Road 104 right-of-way as established by special warranty deed under Franklin County Auditor's File Number 505754, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Potem Grim, we got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right, looks like it passes unanimously. That'll jump us on to number nine, which is Ordinance and Resolutions Not Related to Hearings. So we have number A, Ordinance Number 4795, Declaration, declaring the city's intent to join and be annexed to the Mid-Columbia Libraries District, and we're going to have Deputy City Manager, Rachel Sadeau.
Thank you, Mayor, and evening, members of council. I'm here to seek your consideration for the ordinance in front of you declaring the city's intent to join and be annexed into the Mid-Columbia Libraries District. We have been partners with the library district for more than five decades, and our community is deeply engaged with their services, and Pasco residents are among the highest users in their system. And our 2025 survey reported about over 96% satisfaction rate with the library's services overall. The services is currently funded by the city's general fund and costs around $3 million annually, and it is important for us to secure something that is long-term, uh, long-term sustainable and stable fund, and that is also the library's desire as well. With this annexation, if it passes, it would shift the funding model from the general fund to a dedicated Mid-Columbia Library property tax levy, and at this time, it is estimated to be 23 cents per thousand assessed valuation, about $115 per year for a home that is valued at half a million dollars. The action in front of you, however, is not approval of the annexation itself, and that's important to remember. What, what you have in front of you is a request to be annexed, which, if approved, will then go to Mid-Columbia Libraries Board of Trustees. If they concur, it will go to Franklin County Board of Commissioners to be put on the ballot, and when it goes on the ballot, the residents of Pasco will vote on whether they want this annexation to go through or not. If the voters approve the annexation, Pasco residents would gain direct representation within the library's district. Governance structure and library's operations would full, would shift fully under Mid-Columbia Libraries authority. Right now, they, we have essentially a management operations with them. Some additional agreements, if this passes, would, we would have to kind of work through, for example, continued use of some of the city-owned facilities, we'd have to work through the lease, and also, we've been discussing opening a branch at Martin Luther King facility, so we'd have to work through that. So there's still some work to be done if the Pasco citizens vote to be annexed into the library district, and with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
All right. Is there any members of the council that, let's start off with Mayor Potem Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I'm understanding you correctly, Ms. Sadeau, in a sense, this is kind of cutting out the middleman, right?
That is correct.
Us being the middleman, okay. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I, I would be up for, you know, letting the voters decide at that point.
Yep. Voter side is always important. Let's move to Councilman Paralus.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm in total support of, support of this declaration, and hopefully, the people of Pasco will approve this. I think strategically, this assists us in bridging that deficit gap and utilizing those general fund dollars for other stuff that, that we need to pay for, so I'm total, in total support of this.
All right. I'm not seeing any other lights on, so if I could get a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4795, declaring the city's intent to join and be annexed into the Mid-Columbia Libraries District, finding that the public interest will be served thereby in requesting the concurrence of the library district board of trustees.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Potem Grim, and I have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. We'll also try to give the one online, Councilwoman Bras a chance to vote as well. I kind of skipped it last time, we were kind of quick, but all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. So all those opposed say nay, so it looks like that passes unanimously as well. So that's going to jump us on to 9B, which is Quasi Judicial Closed Record Hearing in Ordinance Number 4796, Desert Bloom LLC Zoning Determination R4, portion of an ex-property, and this is going to be by Director Haley Matson.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Tonight before you, actually, point of order, Attorney Ferguson, did you want to read the quasi judicial proceedings before I start?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So this is a quasi judicial hearing, uh, to, it's a hearing or proceeding to render a final decision on the materials that are presented. It's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of the specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies. The hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding, which would affect council member personally, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, prior to hearing the facts, D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing, and finally, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Hearing none, and just one follow-up here, this is the, according to our monitor, Haley, I believe this is the closed-record hearing matter?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so just one addition that we usually don't read with regard to quasi judicial matters, but this is a closed-record hearing, so there is, there's an additional disclaimer that needs to be read, so it's, if a closed-record hearing, no new evidence may be presented. Only those who participated in the open-record hearing in front of the hearing examiner may testify, and arguments must be summary only and not offer new evidence. So that's a, something we don't have to deal with quasi judicial, but this time it would apply.
All right. Thank you for that. So, Director Haley Matson, if you want to?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Ferguson, for reading those guidelines here. So tonight before you is a closed-record hearing, and tonight, council is conducting this hearing and considering ordinance number 4796, which would assign R4 High Density Residential Zoning to the Desert Bloom LLC portion of a recently annexed Broadmoor area, and I will show you a map. I'm going to jump around a little bit on the slides here so that they can follow what I'm talking about here. So this is the slide showing the area, and this ordinance, if approved, would finalize zoning for approximately 8.6 acres, located south of Burns Road, east of Shoreline Road, west of Road 122, and north of the future Sanofur Parkway. The proposal was reviewed by the Pasco Hearing Examiner, and the Hearing Examiner did recommend approval of this zoning determination, and that recommendation has since been appealed, which is why tonight is under the closed public record hearing format. So I'm going to go into process, and then I will go in a little more depth than normal for land use applications to the council, since there was an appeal, and I believe we have members of the public who are here interested in this, so I'm going to go into detail what the application is and what the appeal was for, and then I'll answer technical questions that you may have before opening the closed-record public hearing. So this site, this slideshow- So this site, this slideshow is the process and I'll walk you through each of these components and the process that led us to today. On July ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the Hearing Examiner held the initial public hearing on the proposed R four zoning for this piece of property I showed you earlier. And to ensure com complete notification, the hearing was continued to August thirteenth and notice was mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet. The public record was closed on August thirteenth and the examiner issued his recommendation on August twenty-seventh. The Hearing Examiner found the request was consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Broadmoor Master Plan and the city zoning criteria and has forwarded this to the city council for review. On September sixth, a timely appeal was filed by nearby residents meeting the twenty percent signature requirement that's listed under PMC twenty-five. Two, ten, oh, seven, zero, which triggered this closed record hearing. Um, so the purpose of this request, the, um, Desert Bloom LLC property was part of the September second annexation. That was brought forward to the city council earlier this year. And under Franklin County, it was zoned, um. RT transitional rule and the city now must assign a zoning designation to this piece of property that has been annexed into the city. Um, so that when it is, um, formally inserted into the city, it has a city zoning attached to it. And the request tonight is for R four high density residential, which is consistent with the medium density residential designation. That is listed within the Broadmoor Master Plan that was approved, um, through the area and adopted under city code. The zoning action itself does not approve a specific development at this time. It provides regulatory framework for future housing proposals, which will go through a separate review and CIPA evaluation if needed, so tonight is not. A project level review, that project specific review will occur at a later date, this is for the zoning on the property. And down here with staff findings and recommendation, the Hearing Examiner made findings under PMC twenty-five, two, ten, oh, six, oh. Concluding that the proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan and Broadmoor Master Plan. It is compatible with the adjacent residential uses and supports the orderly growth within the urban growth area of the city. Um, this allows for coordinated infrastructure, increasing housing supply and supporting land growth within city limits, which is also required. By the Growth Management Act established in the nineteen nineties by the state of Washington. Um, the state of Washington does require any city planning under the Growth Management Act to densify and we are assigned, uh, housing figures. To each city every, um, ten years, the state says, so for example, during this cycle, they've assigned eighteen thousand units for. City of Pasco to grow in the next twenty years, that is a requirement at the state level, so the city is required to. Look at different areas of the boundaries of city limits and establish where these densities will go, and that was part of the Broadmoor. Master Plan exercise where the city reviewed all areas and decided. Where the best place would be for compact mixed use development in in Pasco. So that was determined by the Hearing Examiner to meet our comprehensive plan, which is based on state law. Um, and, uh, there was no special conditions or an agreement necessary based on the recommendation because all standard development regulations. Were still to apply and staff has concurred with those findings. And so now I'll move into the appeal portion of this, that was the process at the Hearing Examiner level where a recommendation was. Issued on on this matter and there was, there was, um, several people in attendance at the hearing, I believe there was twenty-five to. Thirty people present, there were several written comments, and then there was a petition signed. By the neighborhood with an upward of. Seven hundred twenty-two signatures and and sixty written comments, so the Hearing Examiner took in. The feedback at the meeting and the written comments and rendered a recommendation on this matter. Um, so the. On September sixth, the appeal was filed by nearby residents, as I touched on before, and it met the twenty percent requirement in code. And the, um, purpose of the request here was that. Losing my spot here, one moment, please. Okay, thank you for your patience, so as as a summary, the appellants, um, within the appeal. Raised six primary issues and the issues are detailed in your packet, so every single issue that was appealed. Um, was provided in the staff report with the appellants, um, assertion in the appeal and then staff went ahead and provided. Like cohesive response under each of those items in detail, so the summary I'm providing here, which I'm happy to answer. Any other questions later, if you'd like, um, the summary here is just summarizing the feedback that's provided in the staff report. And I've divided it into six categories to present to you, so the first category is the comprehensive plan consistency. Um, the the appellants, uh, stated that the R four exceeds the medium density residential limits. And the response staff provided is that the Broadmoor Master Plan adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment in two thousand twenty-three established the medium density range up to twenty-nine units per acre. Therefore, the R four designation is consistent with that plan. Um, there was also a note that the, um, categorical exemption for CIPA review on this zoning determination only was improper. And staff's response is that this is a non-project zoning determination and the Broadmoor EIS already analyzed area wide impacts. And the exemption is appropriate based on our review of state code. Then the third major concern related to traffic and school concerns, um, traffic could. Probably be in its own category, we received a lot of comments related to. Traffic concerns in this area, um, that are existing and then concerns that. Traffic would, um, further impact the area for the residents there with this new. New proposal coming in and we had the appellant site Burns Road capacity and school crowding. Um, their response is that staff provided in the report, um. States that transportation and school impacts were addressed in the Broadmoor EIS and master plan. And future projects must meet the city level of service standards and dedicate right of ways needed. And again, I'll point out here that this is a zoning determination on the property and this zoning determination is embedded within the Broadmoor Master Plan, which did. Also, um, include a traffic review of the area, so if there's a future project that comes in and builds on this property shown on the screen. The applicant will be required to, um, comply with the traffic plan prepared for the Broadmoor area. If anything in the project falls outside of scope of that environmental review conducted for the Broadmoor area, the applicant will be required to do further environmental review for the project. And cannot exceed the level of service standards and requirements placed on that area for for traffic. Neighborhood compatibility was a concern raised by the appellants and at the hearing. And the main concern was that R four is too dense next to the RS twenty zoning, which is in the county, that's a, a, a larger designation. And the R one areas that are located within the city limits. And staff's response is this site is separated by an arterial and plan for medium density transition. The intent is still residential in nature and not detrimental to the adjacent uses. The procedural notice, there was an issue with the public notice that occurred during this process and staff has identified how that area occurred and we've since fixed it for future projects. Um, the early notification was incomplete and the Hearing Examiner, in light of this, continued the hearing and. Um, renoticed all the owners within three hundred feet to circumvent this deficiency. And the sixth theme related to the appeal is the conditions and. Um, agreement requirement and the appellants requested conditions to limit density or require improvements for this area. Staff's response is conditions aren't needed for a zoning determination, any specific project will undergo separate public review and infrastructure requirements. Moving on to the conclusion here, um, staff in the Hearing Examiner both find that the R four zoning is consistent with the city's adopted plans and environmental review. The underlying land use of the medium density for the property was part of the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan. Um, so this was designated several years ago, it was updated upon adoption of the Broadmoor Master Plan, so this is consistent with. With plans in the area over the past several years and. Um, to note, the R four zoning does allow for the greatest level of flexibility when subdividing the property into finished single family residential lots, which. Is why the applicant has applied for this zoning. There have been statements that, um, the R four zone is the only zone that allows for multifamily housing and that's, that's not accurate, all of those. Um, R one, R two, R three zones allow for multifamily development, there's just different. Ranges of lot sizes and more flexibility offered in the R four zoning. Um, again, this, this project supports Pasco's long term housing and infrastructure goals for the Broadmoor area, future projects will still be subject to. Um, public hearings if applicable, CIPA review and mitigation is needed, um, therefore. Staff is recommending approval of this and, um. If council does approve this ordinance tonight, the city clerk will record it with Franklin County and staff will issue a notice of decision. Decision to all affected parties, any future subdivisions or development on the site will come back through the public process for review and approval. Um, we do have alternatives for council, um, council may modify the recommendation, deny or direct staff to prepare a. Con, um, con commit intent agreement, I'm sorry, I struggle with that root word. As provided under PMC twenty-five, two, ten, oh, eight, oh. And if, uh, council would like to be advised more of those steps later on in the process, Attorney Ferguson and myself are happy to walk you through that, but staff is recommending. Approval and at this point, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any technical questions that you have, maybe not policy questions, but technical questions related to the staff report. And I can field those with council, after that, we can proceed to opening the closed record public hearing where we'd be seeking input from. Folks, as Attorney Ferguson stated, that have already attended the initial hearing and have been a part of the new record. And that no new information may be submitted to the record or brought in, so. We we do want to be flexible with this requirement since people are coming, um, you know, this evening to speak on the matter and we we love participation in in these processes. Um, so if there is something that's, that's severely out of scope of the. Materials here, I will turn my microphone on and ask to jump in, Mayor, as a point of clarification to inform you that the testimony provided was. Out of scope of the testimony that we can take in, so this point, happy to answer technical questions.
Appreciate you clarifying that. Um, let's go with, uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell.
I just have one clarif clarification question. The Broadmoor Master Plan traffic study. That was done. It says twenty nineteen, that was for medium density residential or high density residential?
There was a range of units provided, so it was done based on a mixed use of residential and commercial uses. So there was a range up to fifteen dwelling units per acre that was looked at for the whole area, so that wasn't. Conducted on a site by site basis, it was conducted globally for the Broadmoor area. Um, so it, if it. I'm not sure if it was actually listed under medium density residential or high density, but the the range of units. Um, reviewed by the traffic report was up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. And that was noticed in the, that was mentioned in in the appellants application. About the density not quite matching, but it's important to note here that the traffic review is a preliminary transportation analysis for the entire Broadmoor area, it does not dictate zoning. So if the traffic review went up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. And we find that the specific proposal falls outside of that range during review of the actual development proposal. The applicant is required to submit another another CIPA in an updated traffic report, so it looked at the area collectively. Fifteen dwelling units per acre, um, and this is one piece to that entire area, so if this, this area is higher in density, it doesn't necessarily. Mean that it's not compliant with the Broadmoor TIA.
Okay. You just said a lot of.
It's a very technical.
Process everything you just said.
It's very technical matter, so, um, very thick packet of information here.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, did I follow up to that?
Yeah, let's jump on to Councilman.
So with this, um, R four transition, you're saying that the scope of the traffic study. Did include a possibility of this amount of density in that area?
Yeah, not that, so that was an average for the whole area, fifteen dwelling units per acre and. The area is composed of commercial uses and residential uses, so we're not going to see. This amount of density throughout the whole area, that's how an EIS works when you're looking at a, a, a established, um, master plan. You look at it collectively as one impact and then as you get projects that come in, you look and you say, okay. Let's give this, uh, development as an example, so they're coming in at a. Higher density, we're looking at the trips collectively for the area, now if this project does need more analysis, given that this. Transportation analysis again was preliminary for the master plan, we will require that upon development application.
But we don't know if we would require that now?
Um, not until we see what is being built there, this is simply a zoning designation for a property. So we have areas around town that are zoned right now for residential development, they're vacant and they're not developed. We wouldn't go to those sites and require a traffic study until we knew the extent of what the development would be.
So if we didn't like the way the traffic study happened later on, because of the density, we could then pull back. And come to go with something with a lower density.
Um, if they don't comply with the standards, we wouldn't be able to approve the proposal, so they'd need to go back to the drawing board and if they couldn't make it work and maybe it didn't pencil to redo. That whole area with traffic improvements, they may consider coming back and doing, uh, a different zone or not moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
All right, so let's, uh, jump to Councilwoman Blaisdell.
In my mind, what I'm thinking is road sixty-eight, nobody anticipated the high. Traffic volume on sixty-eight, that's why I think it's so important that we look at things from. As that is an example when developing road one hundred. Now, I'm not by any means saying I have the answer, but, um, Burns Road is already busy. So I would think that we would look at the traffic study before we start. Changing zoning, I don't, I could be wrong, but that's just my personal opinion.
Ms. Madison, do you want me to chime in on that a little bit?
Aye, yeah, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so we're we're kind of talking about two different things, so when there was the Broadmoor Master Plan. Uh, that was, and again, I'm not out of my, uh, school here, but, uh, that was a, a, a non-project EIS and environmental impact statement and so. As part of that, a requirement was to have a traffic component that had to be analyzed. So you don't know, without knowing what's gonna go in that area, you have to basically kind of pick it down the middle, that's what the traffic analysis has to go through. Uh, and then it's able to then, uh, go through their other steps for the complete the CIPA EIS process. So it's just a, uh, it's a, that's why it's called a master plan because it's really very general in nature. And I think what, um, Ms. Madison is is saying is that, uh, anytime while that is, uh, is great, there are folks that want to come in and not have to. And then be able to rely on that already, uh, non-project EIS that that's been done under CIPA. Uh, that's great, but when they don't, uh, meet that requirement, they're going to have to then go through a separate CIPA process, which could also entail. A traffic impact analysis, uh, and that could come up with a completely different result. Uh, so while it's, uh, it's, it's, it was a necessary component of, uh, the Broadmoor Master Plan, uh, requirements to do the, to already. Have the the CIPA EIS in place, uh, so that folks wouldn't have to come in and piecemeal it, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that. Uh, that's the only traffic analysis that's ever going to have to be done for any project that goes on in that area.
Answer your question.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, let's move back to Councilman Gata.
So isn't there an estimate of the amount of people that are going to be living the in this area since it's, um, moving to R four? Wouldn't there be a, a, a general framework that we would consider? And apply that to the traffic study, I mean, I know, uh, uh, maybe there might be a few less townhouses or or whatever's going to be there condos, uh, but. You 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 would be more than what would be an R three, so wouldn't that come into play when you're considering the study, I mean, isn't there a range where we kind of know if we need to do? The traffic study or not?
Yes, so when the project moves forward and develops, we would look at the traffic study for that, the the assumption for density. For for this project can go up to twenty-nine units per acre and that multiplied by the site is. Five hundred thirty-nine units, but then you want to probably deduct. Seventy-five percent of the site and then you assume, so that would be four hundred units and then, um, in each unit, there's an average of, I think it's gone down since I've last checked the statistics, but around two. Two point three, two, between two and two and a half folks per unit, that's, that's just my anecdotal answer at this point. Um, so you'd have. Yeah, thousand, thousand folks living there, um, and and back to the.
That's the high end?
Yeah, yeah, that would be the average, I would say.
Okay.
Just based on it. And for four hundred units, that typically generates one P M peak hour. Um, trip between four and six P M, which is what our traffic, um, uh. Our traffic, uh, impact fees are based on.
Would you mind telling me the density range? I apologize for not knowing it.
The density range I just provided the max, so the max would be four hundred, I doubt they could actually get that many units on there, just, it just really depends if there's.
How how few can be on the property?
I'm sorry?
How few can be on the property?
Um, man, twenty, I believe the density range is twenty to twenty-nine units. Six to twenty-nine, so if it's, all right, so six, so the lower end of the range would be a hundred units. So, a hundred to four-hundred units.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I'm not seeing any other questions. So, now we're gonna conduct a closed public hearing, so. And, uh, anybody in the audience, I assume you're all not, uh, against the Mariners and Seahawks, so you're here for this, so. So, who would like to be first?
I'm online here for this as well.
Okay, well, let's go to the online person first.
Mayor, just to clarify, every person needs to attest that they did speak at the open record hearing prior to speaking tonight.
Okay, did you hear that? Did you speak at the, with the hearing examiner at his meeting?
Ma- Nathan Grimm, I s- I spoke at, uh, previous hearing examiner meetings.
All right, well, please proceed.
So, I, my concern was about Burns Road. Um, I've written into, uh, uh, council, Councilman Milney about the master plan and the transportation master plan and the comprehensive plan and the level of service on Burns Road. Um, Burns Road just cannot handle it and more traffic. It has not been able to handle more traffic. The county proceeded to add projects, thus I live in. We're gonna continue to build. I, I understand that, but we have to do something about Burns Road. We can't just say, oh, we can't. The, the hearing examiner found the arguments that we made about traffic, um, unmoving due to the issue had existed previously. Well, the issue exists, so when do we fix it? The answer is not to say every project just gets a pass and we never have to fix it. That is lunacy. And we, uh, we know in Pasco, based on our previous experiences, that we've gotten traffic stuff wrong. And I have a grave concern, and I've expressed this, expressed this to the hearing examiner, that once we zone this, the ship has sailed on our opportunity to do it correctly. The transportation master plan says Burns Road's supposed to be a, a primary arterial, which gives it four, four lanes of travel, two lanes in each direction. With the current right-of-way that exists, that is not possible. The, the current right-of-way and in the current places that Burns Road is developed, it's a single lane of travel in each direction with a turn lane. A- and to make that whole Broadmoor area medium density to high density, and you're relying on Burns and a future Sandifer, which isn't even designated in the transportation plan as a primary arterial, just an arterial, which means it's two lanes of travel and a turn. That is not enough. Traffic east-west, in and out of that entire area fr- from now into the future. All right, so that, that, that's my concern. That's a summary of my concern. I know the hearing examiner said it's a pre-existing condition, but at some point, we have to fix things that are not right. And just continuing to say because it didn't get fixed before, we're not gonna fix it now. I would, I ask staff to explain that logic. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And, uh, just clarification, I was advised by staff to, to not read any emails, to only stick with what was in my packet. And so, again, just clarifying, I did not have any ex parte communication. I didn't read any emails. I stuck with just what the hearing examiner, what, or else I would have been recused from this meeting if I was getting outside advice. So, just making that comment that, uh, unfortunately, on these cases, I, I can't be involved and just go off what's, what is presented. So, I think that's the only, uh, online, Nathan Grimm, all right? So, those are members of the audience that would, uh, like to, uh, make a comment or say something?
My name is Piper Barton, and, um, I was at the, um, hearing before. And I talked. So, um, my main point was, um, neighborhood, um, compatibility is what I spoke about. And from a real estate point of view, um, because I've been a broker here in the Tri-Cities for about forty years. So, my concern, and I, I live in here too, I'm a resident here at Solstice. And I've sold a couple of homes in there, a couple of them backed up to Road one-twenty-two. And, um, I actually called into the city and asked for my clients, on my client's behalf, what that was zoned for. And at the time, I was told it wasn't incorporated, it was soon gonna be annexed, not soon, but it would be. And, um, told that it was medium density. So, a couple of people bought, um, who are right on Road one-twenty-two. So, my main concern is if, um, housing of lower value goes in there, that it will, um, bring values down that are right next to, like, right next to here. So, just hoping there wouldn't, wouldn't be apartments. I know the application was for single-family detached. So, that's where I was coming from, from a real estate point of view, was keeping the neighborhood comprehensive and not having anything go in that would take our values down.
All right, well, thank you for your testimony.
Okay.
And comments, um, is there anybody else in the audience that, uh, wants to speak on this issue?
Uh, just a reminder to have people test or attest at the beginning that they did actually speak at the open record hearing.
Okay. I assume.
Thank you.
You have your name and, uh, answer that question as well.
All right, I'm Robin Dillsworth. I do attest that I spoke at both hearings. And, uh, I, small notes, I had a half sheet last time, so gonna keep it to a summary. I'll tell you what I talked about the first time. Primarily, in the second time, I was just reiterating that I still stand behind that plus what was said that night. A lot of other things were very good. Um, so, my first question that night was, why change the designation to high-density four when three would accomplish what he says he's building? And, uh, that's still a huge worry to me because density three should accomplish what he wants for single-family homes that are, um, standing and not in an apartment. So, I really believe that we're opening it up wide open for an apartment. And I'm one of the ones that backs right up. My backyard views that lot. And our back, the, the way Polish makes their houses is the back of each house is almost all windows. And so, you put an apartment back there and they're all gonna be looking right into your home and no privacy. Right now, there are all those trees and they're beautiful and love the trees. And I'm afraid the trees are gonna go. But if the trees could stay, that would be a huge help too, because that would render some privacy. But, uh, I was one of the homes that Piper sold. And she told me that it would be medium density because I was, you know, it's farm right now, but you, you know, it's not gonna stay that way. And so, I thought, okay, that's good, it'll be good. And, uh, so this was not at all what we were foreseeing and what she had been told and what was told to me. We just bought there last, um, last July, a year and three months ago. And so, uh, my other concern that I wrote down here was crime. I left Road forty, um, because crime was encroaching on our area down by the river. And, uh, my son is a police officer. So, I asked him, where is a really safe place to move to? And, because I wanted to stay in Pasco, love Pasco. And, uh, he did too. So, he said, you know what, Burns, Burns Road. And told me about the Solstice down through there. So, it was the first place I looked and we bought right there. We loved it. And, uh, he said, very low crime. And then those three apartment complexes have come in, in that short time that I've lived there. And he says, well, crime's gone up, theft is happening all the time, so that's a real concern. And then, um, another thing I, the fourth thing I want to talk about was, um, so it was the high-density, why go with four when you have three? High-rise, you lose your privacy, crime. The fourth thing would be, um, I'm a C P A. And so, I know that you all are looking for income to your city. I am too, I would love to see it thrive. Um, and yet, whenever these, uh, these homes go in, whatever the builder puts in there, they're going to make, uh, they're gonna make revenue for the city. And they're gonna put their homes someplace. They're definitely gonna build, a builder builds, they're gonna find a place to build. So, you're still gonna get that revenue. But what is a concern is if these homes that are in that vicinity end up losing value, especially, you know, ours are like five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty, but across the street from us go upwards over a million. If they lose value, you lose revenue. So, I just wanted you to think about that.
Thank you for that. Um, I think I saw somebody else that was getting up, ready to talk.
Hi, City Council, um, my name is Cody Fielding. I am the applicant.
Okay.
And I did speak or testify in the first two public hearings. So, um, yeah, I just reiterate maybe what we, um, what I mentioned in those meetings. The land use has been public for, uh, since the twenty-eighteen comp plan, comprehensive plan. And Haley mentioned that as well. And so, uh, from our perspective, this land use has been out there for some time. Um, the land use does allow, I, I should say, the land use requires either R two, R three, or R four. And my next sentence is very important. Any of those zonings require six to twenty-nine units per acre, any of them. R two can go up to twenty-nine units per acre, R three can go up to twenty-nine units per acre, R four can go up to twenty-nine units per acre. Any of these zone, those zonings can also be down to six units per acre, but they have to fit somewhere in between. So, I sympathize with the idea that the R four, uh, high-density, I'm using air quotes, um, uh, because they're all the same density. R two through R four in this instance consists of Broadmoor overly district. And so, I, I would like the City Council to consider that in this. The reason we chose R four is because it allows the greatest level of flexibility for creating single-family lots, single-family residential homes for the, I would say, the average, um, citizen of, of Pasco to be able to afford to live in Pasco. And this area has been designated for that express purpose. And so, we're, frankly, we're honored and we're excited to be part of that, to bring that housing to the Tri-Cities or to Pasco specifically. And, and so, I, I hope that, um, makes sense. Yep, I think that's, I think that's pretty much the summary that I wanted to share. Thank you for your time. Do you want a follow-up question?
Yeah, well, yeah, okay. If I could, Mayor, thank you. Um, you just said we want R four because it allows flexibility for single-family homes. So, we're not talking about townhomes, condos?
Technically condos and townhomes are single-family homes, technically. Um, what I'm, what we're not referring to is, you know, call it three- or four-story apartments where one doesn't own their unit, or rather, they rent a unit. And those units are typically, you know, in a three- or four-story building in the Tri- typically three-story in the Tri-Cities, which is what we see on Burns today. So, in our instance, it would be builders who would be building one- or two-story homes. See, detached or possibly attached, depends on the builders, to be totally honest with you. There's likelihood for townhomes if those builders desire townhomes, because that's what the public wants. It's a little bit lower price point that makes it more affordable for a lot of people. Typically, a townhome is thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars less than it, than an attached, I'm sorry, than a detached, single-family home. And therefore, sometimes builders prefer to build that because it gets more people into houses.
And how much is a townhome going these days?
Uh, three-sixty to four-twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm happy to answer your other questions that the council might have.
Basically, you're saying, I mean, you're telling us that these are gonna be townhouses, they're not gonna be four-story apartments?
Right now, correct. So, to clarify, right now, the builders that were, that are interested, we're not the builders, we're developing for builders that want to come in and build. Um, they are interested in single-family, uh, attached and detached. What that means is single-family sort of standalone that you would see, kind of in a traditional neighborhood where it's one unit per building. They're also interested in potentially townhomes, which are sort of like glued-together type homes. But they're still single-family homes in the sense that they're on their own parcel. And so, a homeowner can go and buy that specific townhome unit that happens to share a wall with somebody. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's go with our Mayor Pro Tem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be a question for staff, I don't know who's the best to answer this, but, um, what makes an R four more flexible?
So, the, the, the R four allows, um, single-family lots, it allows flexibility in how you can configure them. And it's escaping me all of the details. I think you go down a twenty-foot widths for a townhome as opposed to, call it forty or fifty or something like that? Yeah, yeah, that's true. So, the square footage, so, to get to tw- to six to twenty-nine units per acre, um, requires a little bit of creativity, let's call it, for lot sizing to achieve single-family residential, which is what we're trying to do. It's really easy to get there on three-story apartments. I mean, that's, that's super easy. But to do single-family residential, which is what our plan is, um, you can get, you can go down to, I, I wanna say it's two-thousand square feet for R four per lot. That would be like a townhome lot. Whereas R three and R two are bigger than that. Off the top of my head, it's escaping me exactly those numbers, maybe four-thousand and five-thousand, something like that. Um, but that's pretty much it. So, again, we're gonna be less than half of the twenty-nine, like, we just are. Uh, it, because that's the only way to get there. It's impossible to get up to twenty-nine units per acre doing single-family residential. And even, even three-story apartments, they're hovering into eighteen to twenty-two units per acre, maybe twenty-four, twenty-five if they're smaller units. So, yeah, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, that does. I may ask some follow-up questions of staff during, um, discussion time, but yes, thank you, that starts me down that path. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else?
Um, I know member, I mean, I guess kind of like maybe a little off-topic, but they talked about like a tree line or trees. Is there gonna be any way, like, say, if you're building these townhouses where there's like trees? Because, I mean, say if you have three townhouses and you have another guy that has a, a yard, there could be maybe three to four townhouses in this, that one guy's backyard. You know, as far as if you stack them in that small lots, is there any plans to separate the, the housing development that's the low residential development from the one that you're proposing? I mean, what would be like a, again, like a tree line or something like, where you don't have people looking down into your yard? Is, is that for consideration on this or?
Um, at this point, to be honest, we have not considered that, yeah. So, our viewpoint is you kind of have, you know, two-acre lots. I'm gonna disappear from the microphone.
Okay.
You know, two-plus acre lots over here turn into one-acre lots, turn into half-acre lots, turn into quarter-acre lots, and then there'd be smaller lots here. And so, there's already sort of a natural progression. And my understanding is that there's no requirement for any sort of transition other than the actual transition of the homes themselves. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of our stance. At some point, there, um, there should be a transition, which is why we're proposing something that we are proposing as opposed to three- or four-story apartments, yeah.
So, obviously, townhouses better than apartments, I can guarantee you that, but, uh, um, all right, uh, let's go back to Councilman Carter.
According to the constraints that we are under, according to Growth Management Act, according to the comprehensive plan, w- w- what has to go here anyway? You know, like, what, what are, you know, i- i- or is there a possibility of going to less density here? And still being compliant?
It has to be between six to twenty-nine units an acre. Yeah.
And you're saying you're already at the lower end of that?
Yeah, we're going to be somewhere between eight to twelve units per acre. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate. We, we feel like that's a reasonable transition as opposed to going, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine units per acre, right there. Yeah.
All right. I've not seen any other council lights on. So I do appreciate. Does Councilwoman Brahas have any questions or?
I do not.
Okay, I guess she's good.
And I would say the previous zoning, I think it was two weeks ago with SG Land Management, that was approved, is effectively the same ask. Just happens to be R4, but they were still, they're still within the six to twenty-nine units per acre. And that was, that was passed by City Council. So.
Point of order, Mayor. This is a closed-record public hearing where we're supposed to be taking in comments from individuals, including the applicant. And back and forth conversations are, and Attorney Ferguson can weigh in too. But I just want to point out, if we keep doing a conversation, we might need to jump in and wait for those technical questions to happen after the closed-record hearing is, is closed.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're, we're good. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Libbert. I testified at one of the hearings. And one of the applicants as well. The traffic has been brought up several times. And just reiterate that this is not a project-based hearing. This is a zoning determination. And as Mrs. Mattson clarified, that any traffic mitigations that would be required would come about when the project comes to City Council. We'll have a preliminary plat- application. And so any needs to address traffic would come through, through the application after we've, after we've applied for that application. And if we need to have a traffic study and, and what the implications would be to that. But this is just for zoning and I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you for that. Is there any other member from the audience that? Going twice, going three times? All right, so we are going to close, just close the record hearing.
I'm sorry, Councilman Millen?
Yes?
I just wanted to see if there's any questions for any of the other testimony?
We had a pretty comprehensive report and you already had your three minutes. So I think unfortunately, we're going to have to, to move on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so anybody have any other questions before we get a motion? I'm not seeing any. So let's, if we get a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm. I guess if anyone had a comment then first?
Sorry, thank you. I was just hoping, just for the sake of, just understanding, maybe just clarification for the public, more, more about, if I can lean into the R4 zoning just a little bit more and why that is flexible and like attractive to the applicants here.
Certainly, and the applicant did cover most of what I will say. The R1, R2, R3, and R4 zoning does allow for apartments to be built. There's a difference in, and they all have the same density range. The, the difference between the R4 is that you're allowed to do a lot size down to two thousand square feet. Not if, if the applicant did, and, and I'd like to clarify what I said. I'm sorry, R1 does not, is not included in that category. So I'm going to restate my, my message here. R2, R3, and R4 have the same density range, six to twenty-nine units. And then each of those zones do allow the same, you know, different uses listed in there, including apartments. The key difference here is the lot size minimum. So in the R4, you can go down to two thousand square feet. If you did every lot, two thousand square feet, you would exceed the density. So that's not really what it means. It just means you can have super tiny lots in some areas, medium-sized lots or larger lots, just more flexibility in lot size and some dimensional requirements, I believe, related to height and setbacks. That offers more flexibility so that you can maybe do more compact development in some areas and then less compact in others. But it does not result in a different overall density.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Of course.
I guess, you know, just one of the, you know, thinking about this from a couple of different angles is, you know, obviously, one of the things that we heard last time was just the, the, the lack of a buffer that is what we heard two weeks ago when we designated that to R3 that people had some concerns about. And one of the things that really stood out to me was how many people spoke against it last time. But yet this time, it's exponentially even more. But however, you know, I think what I'm kind of hearing from the residents is they're looking at the three-story apartments up the road there and not wanting that or just maybe especially what we have on the corner of Argent and sixty-eight there. And suddenly, just all of this, you know, kind of appears. So, you know, I, I'm going to probably struggle with this as much as Ms. Mattson. But I'm just wondering if, you know, based on the testimony of the applicants, if a con- commitment agreement might be better if I pronounce that correctly? Just might give some comfort to the, the residents of, you know, what their, what their, the zoning that they're planning on or the units they're planning on building per acre could, could match up to that to give some of the, the citizens there the peace of mind that they're not going to end up with what they feel is an monstrosity right in their backyard.
You're saying that if most of the zone are high-density four, you like to see it with like wording that, as far as townhouses, is that what you're trying to?
Yes, sir, yes. Give them the flexibility that they're looking for with the R4 zoning that can, you know, get them the flexibility they're looking at within their square footage and working with their lots. But perhaps, you know, the designation keeping it to townhomes and others that will prevent, you know, massive apartment complex from going in next. Just, I'm just trying to find a middle road here is really what I'm trying to find, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mattson, would you like to comment on that?
Um, yes, Mayor, and I am going to just refer to it as an agreement. Just I'm, I really struggle saying that word for some reason. But the agreement that Councilmember Grimm mentioned, that is within council's authority. And Attorney Ferguson, jump in at any time if I'm giving inaccurate information. But I believe council does have the option to formulate an agreement with the applicant that could require a, you know, landscape buffer and a commitment to not constructing apartments since that is within the current applicant's plan. The, the downside to that, if I were the applicant or someone who owns the property is that if the, the property does sell to a third party, let's say the applicant doesn't move forward, then the, the next person would be tied to this arrangement, so it would limit it. And I believe the public did bring that up as a concern during the hearing. Well, they say they're doing single-family, but what if they turn around and sell it or change their minds, you know, et cetera, et cetera? That is possible. So approved as is, the applicant could change their mind tomorrow and do apartments, or they could sell the property and someone else could build apartments. So if, if council does want to go that direction, and I haven't, you know, discussed this with the applicant in advance, the council could set it up to where there's an agreement with this applicant to limit the development to a specific type of development. From a land use standpoint, I usually don't recommend this as the first option just so we can respect our long-range plans and all the time and effort that went into the EIS and the overall plan for Pasco, knowing that we do need to densify and apartments are not looked at highly by most communities or existing residents. And I understand that I'm not, I, I do empathize with that. However, to meet our numbers, the apartments do eventually need to go somewhere. And, you know, we, we need to start somewhere. And Broadmore has been identified as a high-compact transportation area. But back to the original question, certainly within your authority and Attorney Ferguson can jump in if anything I just stated was inaccurate.
No, that, that sounds pretty accurate. Concomitant agreements are, just to be clear, that is an exception. So that would be something. So this is because you're doing a zoning determination. You're, you essentially have three options. You can, you can approve the hearing examiner recommendation as recommended, adopting his findings and moving forward that way. Or you can go the other routes, which is to enter a concomitant agreement or a, or which would include modifications. And then you can also potentially deny, completely deny the zoning, although that's not going to be a real viable option because this is recently annexed property and it does need to get zoned, something. But doesn't necessarily mean it has to get zoned what was applied for. So there, there's some nuances because this is not a typical rezone, which is where the concomitant agreement are in effect. This is an actual zoning determination from an annexation. Though I, I don't know to what degree that would be the most viable option with this since it's, it's actually new zoning. That most of all, all that language in our code is under rezones, not zoning determinations from annexation. So I don't think that is necessarily means that it's, it's not an option. I just don't know what exactly those procedural steps would be. I, I do know this, that any option you choose other than to move forward with the determination or the, excuse me, the findings of the hearing examiner and the recommendation would have to, won't be able to be done tonight because the council will need to make its own findings, either by determining that it needs to be modified and then enforced through a concomitant agreement or through denying it. So the, the option tonight is to move forward with the hearing examiner recommendation and approve the ordinance which does that, adopts his, adopts his findings and then his recommendation. Or do your best to come to a conclusion on what the majority of council wants to have staff work on and draft to bring back to you for findings, which are obviously able to be amended. But we can't do that on the spot right tonight, not knowing whether it's going to be what the council's decision would be.
All right.
Attorney Ferguson, I'm not sure what the answer is to this question. The applicant has asked if they're allowed to state their position on this matter?
No, not at this time. This is a closed-record hearing based on the recommendation from the hearing examiner. So the hearing examiner has, sorry, let me pull up here just one second. Lost your hair. Okay, so the hearing examiner recommended, if I'm, if I'm stating this correct, Ms. Mattson, please correct me if I'm wrong here. But the hearing examiner recommended approval with no conditions and not entering into a concomitant agreement.
That is correct.
Okay, got it, okay. So I think at, I'm trying to, so yes, if that is the recommendation of the hearing examiner, then I think that the, the applicant could speak on that matter.
Okay, so the applicant's permitted to go up and, and speak on this matter at this time?
Only if that was an issue that he addressed at the previous open record hearing.
So would I need to open up the, because I did close the, the record hearing? Would I need to open that back up?
No, no, this is, since this is a closed-record hearing, and I appreciate you going through the machinations for that. But this entire hearing is a closed-record hearing. And that's why the applicant, or the folks when they come up to speak are, are only allowed to restate the, the claims or, excuse me, the statements that they made at the open record hearing. So it's, it's from a technical standpoint, it's, it doesn't have to be open and close that specifically. But at this time, I don't, I don't think that the applicant addressed that at the hearing examiner level. So I wouldn't recommend him being allowed to address that at this time. We can certainly staff and I can certainly work with the applicant separately apart from this hearing. But at this time, I don't think that's advisable.
Yep, I, I concur with Attorney Ferguson's recommendation on not allowing the applicant to speak right now because it was not brought up specifically at the original hearing and we haven't permitted anyone else to bring additional information. So the applicant, that applies to the applicant as well.
Okay. All right, let's, Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you. I guess just, yeah, to empty the thoughts, I guess some of the thoughts that I'm working through as we think about this beyond what we've even mentioned already is, I think it's important for the public to know, as I get reminded frequently, that I believe we are only one of four states in the whole union that has a Growth Management Act. And what that means is the state basically dictates how we are to build and the density and all that. And tho- those requirements, like I think Ms. Mattson was trying to get to is that density has to go somewhere. And, you know, no one kind of wants it in their backyard and that's what makes this really difficult. And my, my heart goes out, definitely the people that, you know, no one wants to see their quality of life or their property value go down. But at the same time, you know, to attract businesses out to the Broadmore area, you know, we, they're going to want to see more dense housing out there too. And so I think that's another side of this, you know, we do need to consider at the same time. So, you know, there are, I, I know the onion illustration gets way overused, but I think there are a lot of layers to this that are worthy of consideration.
All right, any other comments? All right, well then, Mayor Protem Grimm, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four seven nine six, assigning R4 High Density Residential District to the Desert Bloom LLC portion of the annexation area as recommended by the hearing examiner and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm. We have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. Let's do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas?
Yes.
Councilmember Brahas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grimm?
Yes.
And Mayor Milley?
Ah, yes.
It passes unanimously.
All right. Well, thank you for that. All right, let's move on to the other quasi-judicial one. Item C, ordinance number four seven nine seven, Department of Natural Resources rezone from RT to R3 and RT to C1. And let's also start off with Mr. Ferguson before we move it over to Director Mattson.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this is again, another quasi-judicial matter where proceeding is to render a final decision on the materials that are presented. It's a proceeding which council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific parties in a hearing or proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. Councilmembers should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows, demonstrated bias or against any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, whether there has been any ex parte contact, and finally, any other conflict a councilmember believes that would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. Any councilmember has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them know. Hearing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceeding? Hearing none, please proceed.
All right, if we get Director Haley Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to pass this off to our Planner Three, Ivan Baragon. And he will be presenting this matter. And this is not a closed-record hearing, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. So Ivan will take it from here. And Ivan, when you're changing slides, you can use the arrow on the keyboard. And if it doesn't work, oh, it does work, okay. Turning it over to you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. As Haley mentioned, my name is Ivan Baragon, Planner Three. Tonight, I will be presenting the rezone proposal submitted by Habitat for Humanity on behalf of the Washington State Department of Natural Resources. The request seeks to change the zoning from RT Residential Transition to R3 Medium Density Residential and from RT to C1 Retail Business District. I will be covering the Pasco Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Plan map, and the proposed city zoning map. A rezone petition must clearly justify the proposed zoning change, address potential impacts nearby prop- on nearby properties and the Comprehensive Plan, and include any additional information requested by the hearing examiner. Following the public hearing, the examiner evaluates whether the proposal aligns with Comprehensive Plan, provides community benefits, avoids negative impacts, requires any conditions or agreements with the city. A public hearing was held on September tenth, twenty twenty-five, and the hearing examiner issued a recommendation for approval on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. City Council consideration. Council may choose to approve the reclassification with or without modifications, enter into a concomitant agreement with the petitioner, or deny the reclassification. No appeals were received on this proposed rezone. The proposal is located south of Burden Boulevard, west of Road sixty-eight, and north of Interstate one eighty-two, partially within the area planned for future Route seventy-six overpass. The existing RT zoning functions as a future Route 76 overpass. The existing RT zoning functions as a transitional designation and does not align with the comprehensive plan. Under the comprehensive plan, parcel number 117530015, the western parcel, this large portion, is designated for medium density residential use, which sets a density of six to 20 dwelling units per acre. This is outside of the Broadmoor overlay district, so that's why it's 20. A portion of parcel number 117500118, that's this sliver here, is designated for commercial use. And, uh, this center line is the, uh, anticipated Route 76 overpass. If ordinance four seven nine seven is passed, the zoning map will be updated to reflect this change as shown. As noted in the agenda report, we are ahead of schedule on this rezone application and we anticipate this will serve as a pattern for future projects reviewed by CED. Based on city council considerations previously discussed, both staff and the hearing examiner recommend approval of the reclassification without modifications. Thank you for your valued time. I'm open to any questions or concerns you may have.
All right. Does anybody on the dice have any questions?
No questions, just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
No, just looking forward to this. You know, I was at the site when the, um, Director of Public Lands for the state of Washington, Hillary Frans, came out and, um, met with, um, some other leaders in the community and talked about this project. Councilman Harpster also let me sit in on, um, a Habitat for Humanity luncheon. He was at where they kind of unveiled the project officially and, um, said it's going to be the largest, um, their largest build in the entire continent of North America. It's going to be right here in Pasco. And I know one of the goals of this council wa- was to find a way for more affordable housing. So, you know, really looking forward to this and, you know, I love that red line there that also represent the Route 76 overpass. So I eagerly support this, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, anybody else? I'm not seeing any lights. All right. I'll guess you're off the hook there. So can I, thank you. Can I get a motion?
You can, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number forty seven ninety seven amending the zoning classification of certain real property located south of Burden Boulevard, west of Road 68, north of Interstate 182, in part within the area between the planned Route 76 overpass in Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from residential transition RT to R three medium density residential and RT to C one retail business and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
All right. So we got a motion by Mayor Portem Grim and we got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right. Did we hear from? Councilwoman, uh, Baras? Be able to, to vote? I don't know if we lost her.
Did you get that? Nope, I'm here. Did you get that?
Uh, so what was your vote? Yea or nay?
Yea.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. That moves us on to item D, ordinance number four seven nine eight, approving fat beam franchise agreement. And this is going to be by Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, this item pertains to the renewal of a franchise for Fat Beam. They are a fiber optic, uh, provider within Zeropasco that currently serve, uh, the school district. They do not serve any residential, um, areas. And this franchise will allow for them to, um, construct, install, operate, maintain, repair, remove, do all the things that they need to do with their underground fiber optics within the cities right away. There was a public hearing held. Of course, I have the slides from our public hearing. I think you've seen all this information. So I don't want, um, to delay this meeting unnecessarily, but I will go through. This is the area that they're serving and their installations and those items, uh, in dark blue are the schools, which is what they're serving currently. This franchise is a ten year agreement, uh, for them to again operate their infrastructure within the right of way. It is non-exclusive, meaning that there's others, um, other utility providers that may have a franchise within the same area and all that is coordinated. These are underground infrastructure. And, uh, the public hearing took place on October 6th. There were no comments. Um, and there were a handful of questions which have been answered now through this packet. Uh, they do not serve residential customers in Pasco and they are not a disadvantaged, um, enterprise. And with that, um, tonight's request is for action on this item approving the renewal of the franchise for Fat Beam. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any, uh, comments or questions for Director Maria Sarah? Um, all right. So if I get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim?
I move to adopt ordinance number four seven nine eight approving a non-exclusive franchise to construct, install, operate, maintain, repair or remove fiber optic cables within the public ways of the city of Pasco and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mayor Portem Grim and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdale. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed say nay. So that can pass as unanimously. All right. So moves on to E, ordinance number four seven nine nine, water and sewer revenue refunding bond ordinance. And this can be in turn Director Garcia.
Uh, I'm going to be covering for Director Garcia. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
And evening council. Uh, the action in front of you is, uh, refinancing approximately, uh, 10 and a half million dollars of outstanding bonds. There's about 12 years left to the debt service. Uh, and traditionally in municipal government, uh, if we have outstanding debt and there's favorable conditions where we can reduce the interest rates or other conditions, um, then we refinance it. It, it depends on what the interest rate is at the time. There's also costs to refinancing. So we consider all of those factors as any homeowner, let's say, would when they're looking to refinance their mortgage. Um, the proposed, um, as we're going into this, uh, we re- uh, request counsel, uh, on, on their agreement on the matter, but there's also parameters within which, um, uh, staff can move forward in. And in this particular case, uh, the parameters would be not to exceed 11 million dollars in, um, refinance, uh, debt principal, not to increase, uh, not to exceed 5.5% in, uh, interest rates, uh, and, um, a payment structure of semi-annual payments, uh, and only move forward if the net savings is 3% of the debt service. So net savings would be, um, just the total savings over the next 12 years minus the cost of issuing the debt. If it's not less than 3% of the debt service, then staff would not move forward. Um, so at this time, um, staff is looking for, uh, your approval on the action in front of you. You do have a cho- uh, uh, choice to vote this down, uh, at which point staff would just not be refinancing the debt service that currently exists.
All right. Is there any, uh, questions on this or? All right. Well, it looks like, uh, let's get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four seven nine nine relating to the waterworks utility of the city, providing for the issuance, sale and delivery of not to exceed 11 million dollars aggregate principal amount of water and sewer refunding revenue bonds to provide funds to A, refund and redeem outstanding water and sewer revenue bonds of the city and B, pay the costs of the issu- issuance and sale of the bonds and the administrative costs of the refunding fixing or setting parameters within respect of certain terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds and providing for related matters and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion first by Mayor Portem Grim and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdale. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed say nay. Looks like that one passes unanimously as well. Let's move on to item F, resolution number four six six six, inter-agency agreement with Washington Traffic Safety Commission grant funding, the 2025, 2026. And, oh, you don't look like, uh, Chief of Police Kitten Rossky.
No, sir. I'm filling in for him.
All right. Well, thank you for doing that. He's probably watching the Seahawk game, so.
Oh, good thing I'm a Baltimore fan. So, Lieutenant Matthew Decker, I'm Lieutenant for Patrol, one of them for, uh, Pasco Police Department. I'm here in front of you again, making another request. So I'm going to give my usual dissertation to tell you what the Washington Traffic Safety Commission does. And then I want to just compliment, uh, the good work that the Pasco police officers have been doing, which is why I'm asking for your, uh, support again. The Pasco Police Department actively participates and cooperates with the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission meetings and enforcement programs. During these meetings, the PD obtains crucial operational data regarding current vehicular collisions and the enforcement programs designed to address this issue. These state-funded initiatives provide financial support to local law enforcement agencies for conducting specialized traffic details focused on DUI, distracted driving, seatbelt compliance, speed regulations and public education. Notably, the state program spearheads the Target Zero campaign with a primary emphasis on educating high school students about the perils of impaired and distracted driving. The state-funded program has enabled Pasco police officers to tackle specific traffic concerns within the city while being financially supported by the state. To continue to participate in this enforcement that is reimbursed by the state, a letter of understanding or inter-agency agreement must be signed and submitted to the commission. This year, we saw the Washington Traffic Safety Commission was reduced our funding by about 20% statewide, but Pasco was actually able to get about $2,500 more in funding, um, to do what we usually do. What we do best is go out there and enforce laws and make the roads safe. And I think that's in part, and I want to pat the men and women that have helped out this year with the dedicated DUI, uh, patrols that we were picked, um, out from the state. Uh, everybody, I think only five departments in the entire state got this, uh, program for, grant for $43,000 that you guys also approved, um, that inter-agency agreement for. During that, 379 total grant hours were used for that. 265 were active DUI patrols, guys out there hunting for people on the roadways that were driving drunk. 114 of those hours were doing mentorship, meaning they were training new officers, those that aren't as good at that craft as others. They received $5,000 in new equipment to go help patrol. Officers made around 658 total contacts while they were out. That included stops for infractions, but most of the time just being visible and stopping vehicles that they believed be drunk driving or speeding. They made 18 DUI arrests plus 32 other criminal arrests. That is just for the patrol that was out there working. That doesn't include the other officers who were out there, um, doing these other patrols, which Pasco right now saw an increase in 32% in drunk driving arrests just this year. We're at about 150 arrests for DUIs. That is a five-year high for the city of Pasco and we haven't finished the third quarter. Sorry, we haven't finished the fourth quarter yet. Just began it. Um, DUI-related crashes because of this enforcement and the actions of those police officers and this program and others like it have decreased DUI collisions 36% since this program started. Unfortunately, that's not happening anymore. This program only ran from May to September. Uh, but this, uh, Target Zero program we're talking about does the same enforcement action. That's why we think we got about $2,500 more than what we did last year to handle this. So I just wanted to tell you guys that to let you know that the men and women who you guys support and, um, helped me get things done in the city did a heck of a job this year. I'm very proud of them.
Appreciate that, Lieutenant Decker. Um, thanks for the good report. So anybody on the dice have a comment or question? Mr. Decker? All right. So if I get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four six 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 authorizing the city manager to execute the inter-agency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission and the Pasco Police Department for grant funding to support high visibility enforcement activities during federal fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mayor Portem Grim and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Aye, all right. We heard that one. All those opposed say nay. So again, passes unanimously. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So let's move on to G, which is resolution number four six six seven, hearing examiner professional service agreement. And we'll get, says by, you got Richa Sedell and then it also says city attorney as well, so.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, City Attorney Ferguson will be helping me as needed or correcting me as I'm getting things wrong. Uh, the agenda and item in front of you is authorization of, uh, for the city manager to execute a professional services agreement, uh, with Andrew Cot, Andrew Cotcamp and Jay Istone for, uh, from the law offices of Cotcamp, Yeti Mac and S. Worthy P L L C, uh, for Pasco hearing examiner services. Uh, Mr. Cotcamp has been, um, Pasco's hearing examiner since 2021, uh, where he was selected after a request for proposal, uh, where we got some, uh, qualified, uh, hearing examiners. Uh, he was selected, um, as the best. Um, s- since then, he has, uh, performed a significant amount of, uh, services for the city, uh, especially around, let me get my notes here, uh, around special permits and rezones. Um, usually there are an average of 40, um, hearings a year or items a year. And, um, so far staff has heard , uh, great things from applicants, uh, and also city staff alike, um, regarding, um, his professional conduct and, um, in the impartial way that he conducts business for, uh, the city and the community of Pasco. Uh, at this point, uh, the reason the contract is in front of you is that there's been some changes to, uh, the indemnification languages that I will, um, let, um, Attorney Ferguson speak to if council has questions on. Um, and, uh, we're looking at, uh, a contract that is, uh, hours-based, so essentially $225 per hour, uh, for hearing examiner services and about $150 per hour for travel services or travel time. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have, but I will also ask, uh, Attorney Ferguson if he has anything, uh, to add to this presentation.
Thanks, Ms. Sedell. Yeah, the, the biggest concern, uh, with the, the need to bring this back in front of council was there was some language in, with regard to the indemnification provisions. So that it, you know, it didn't, uh, seem, or there were some people that, uh, believed that it, that wasn't, uh, as, as expansive as it needed to be to cover all the performance of the hearing examiner while serving as the hearing examiner. Uh, the city obviously, uh, he's, the city, uh, the hearing examiner, uh, does those hearings, uh, on the city's behalf. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, obviously the city does is, is indemnify, uh, their contractor to, to be able to engage in that activity in case somebody wants to try to sue, uh, related to, uh, their performance as in their official capacity as the hearing examiner. So there was some, uh, cloudy language that needed to get cleaned up. Uh, we've got that all squared away and, uh, everybody agrees that, uh, it says what it says, which is that the hearing examiner is covered, uh, for, uh, all, uh, the functions related to, uh, the hearing examiner official capacity, not just, uh, a final decision. So that was the big thing that needed to be, uh, ironed out. We got that squared away. And then, uh, there were a few, uh, just cleanup items that needed to be done. And then also just the minor, uh, increase since it had been, uh, quite some time since, uh, there had been any kind of, uh, um, assessment.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Does anybody on the dice have any questions for either Ferguson or Richa Sedell?
I have a comment, Mayor.
All right. We'll start off with, uh, Councilman Peralas.
Yeah, I brought up a couple of questions in email. I, I just, I just want to know that we're, you know, I understand that, is, I guess essentially what I'm hearing is that this firm is, is doing a good job, but i- it's been a few years. And so I, I don't know. I, I thought we would put out another RFQ and see if there's other firms interested in doing this. I was made aware that I guess hearings examiners are hard to find. But yeah, you, when we're in a budget crunch, I, maybe there's a cheaper version that provides quality services. And so I, I thought it was odd that, um, and I want to bring this up because in the report said this is of the essence. We need to approve this because as to not delay hearings that are coming up. And that's when I brought it up in my emails about, well, shouldn't this have been on a workshop? We talked about it. Um, so those are just my comments. I'll be voting no just because I feel like we should, uh, put out an RFQ and see if there's anyone interested in providing these services and see if we're truly are getting, you know, the best services, best quality and all, honestly also look at per hour rates and stuff. Cause again, we are, um, in a budget crunch and so we should be looking at every dollar that we're spending. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I'm not hearing any. Um, if I get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim? I'm not hearing any. If I get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim?
Yes, sir. I move to approve Resolution Number four-six-six-seven, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Andrew L. Cotcamp and Jay Istone for the law offices of Cotcamp, Yedimac, and S. Worthy P L L C for Pasco Hearing Examining Services.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim, and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and all those opposed say nay?
Nay.
All right, so let the record show, it was five to one. All right, so let's move on to H, which is Resolution Number four-six-six-eight, setting date and time for McCarthy Street Right-Away Vacation Public Hearing, and let's go with Director Haley Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is Resolution Number four-six-six-eight, and this would set a public hearing date for consideration on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five here in front of City Council. And during that public hearing, we would consider the vacation of portions of McCarthy Street and adjacent alleyway and North Idaho Avenue within Frey's addition to Pasco. So tonight's action is purely procedural, where council is not deciding on the vacation ordinance itself, only scheduling the required public hearing. Happy to answer any questions if you'd like recommending that council move forward with scheduling the public hearing.
All right, I'm not seeing any lights on with this, so it looks like we, for the most part, can hear her. So let's get a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number four-six-six-eight, setting seven PM Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as the time and date for a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of McCarthy Street, Alleyway, and North Idaho Avenue in Frey's addition to Pasco.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rosskey, yours?
I can hear you.
What was your vote on that?
Did you not hear that?
Okay, I heard an aye on that, so, all right, looks like it passes unanimously. Let's go on to item I, Resolution Number four-six-six-zero, Health Insurance Interfund Loan. And this is gonna be by interim director, well, it's not here, so.
Yes.
Let's go through Richa Sedell there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This topic we've discussed quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. This is an interfund loan. Essentially, as a reminder, the city has many different funds, and other than general fund, everything else is restricted in its use, as in there's a specific purpose for it. Some are council-manic, as in council makes the restrictions for specific purposes. Some are defined by state, so I'll give an example of traffic impact fee. You can only use that for very, very specific purposes. Just because it is in the city's bank account doesn't mean that it can be used for any purposes. So we kind of view them as separate bank accounts for, or at least different funds for management purposes. And so when one fund is in need, there might be opportunities in other fund to be able to loan the fund in need as one entity would to another. In this particular case, our proposal is for the Economic Development Fund to loan six and a half million dollars to Medical and Dental Insurance Fund. This would be mutually beneficial for both funds because the city has fairly limited opportunities to invest. We're not allowed to take taxpayers' money and put it in the stock market. We have to be really conservative per state and federal laws. And so being able to get a little bit more interest rate than what we might be able to get with treasury bonds and some limited mutual funds is a, is a good opportunity. All of the, the Economic Development Fund has a fairly healthy fund balance, and we believe that any projects and investments that council needs to make in near future, this action would not impact that. And as the, as the staff has proposed of increasing premiums, the increase in premiums will be paying off the debt service. And so the Health Service Fund will be paying Economic Development Fund on a yearly basis. So Economic Development Fund will be making some interest from this transaction. So at this point, we are recommending the approval of this loan, and we've discussed alternatives in the past with council as well. So with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
All right, is there any questions by the council? Let's start off with Councilman Proust.
Thank you, Mayor. How much money, how much economic development funds do we have currently?
So there's two big categories of Economic Development Fund, and I do apologize, I wish I had pulled up that email that I had sent to council last week. But let me speak on just large and, and don't quote me on exact numbers, but it is about eighty-eight million dollars. But sixty-six of that is something that is restricted for use. Any interest on that, council can use it for any other local government purposes. And then the additional twenty, twenty-five million dollars are for economic development purchases. There are, there are projects that, that are probably upcoming as you're looking for economic development throughout the city, purchasing land, purchasing buildings, infrastructure investments, things like that, that that twenty-five million dollars would be used for.
Okay, and so I guess what's the difference between that and our general fund reserves?
At one point, so Economic Development Fund and General Fund is the most closely related funds. And Economic Development Fund is where it's, there was a ten, twelve million dollar transfer, twelve million dollar transfer from General Fund to Economic Development Fund about four, five years ago. So there's a lot of General Fund balance that is kind of sitting out there for economic development purposes that was done via council action, so you can choose to move that out. But Economic Development Fund is specifically set up in Pasco's municipal code to do economic revitalization, economic development.
Yeah, so what's our general fund balance right now, refer reserves?
I want to say, you're putting me on a spot here. I, I can get back to you on that. Sometimes I confuse between that twelve million dollars from Economic Development Fund and add it up, but I wanna say somewhere around twenty-eight million dollars.
Yeah, I just kinda wanna figure that out because it seems like some money isn't, that's maybe perhaps Economic Development Funds is, that's also being portrayed as, well, that's also General Fund Reserves. And so I wanna know what the, what the difference is, how much money do we have in both? But I'll be supporting this endeavor tonight, so I appreciate you answering those questions.
We can give you that breakdown this week.
All right, and if you could give it to the whole council, I think that's something that I'd like to see as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for that. So let's jump to Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to comment, you know, that obviously our options is, you know, the balance or the, the fund needs, funds, no matter, no matter what, and I know some of these were external factors. You know, there was a data breach. I know in my own personal family, we received a letter from the Lords that said, excuse me, there was a data breach. We don't, you know, a bunch of people didn't get their bills, and so we're gonna be sending you extra bills. And so I know we received some of those personally and as a family ourself, and I know there were some other, you know, obviously post-COVID and some other issues that related to this. And, you know, it is kind of a catch-22 where, you know, we believe in taking care of our employees here at Pasco, but at the same time, you know, going eleven years without some of those contributions increasing, you know, probably, you know, at least in part contributed to this. But I think of all the options that are before us today, I think approving this is by far best option, and I will also be in support of it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, thank you for that. Good comment. All right, so I'm not seeing any lights, so if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number four-six-six-zero, authorizing interfund loans from the Economic Development Fund to Medical Dental Insurance Fund.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, all those opposed say nay. Again, passes unanimously. Appreciate that. Let's move on to J, Resolution Number four-six-six-nine, the twenty-twenty-six collective bargaining agreement with International Association of Firefighters Local One-Four-Three-Three. And we got Director Sarah Mattson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here with Pat Heron, the president of I F F fourteen-thirty-three and our firefighter. I'm presenting Resolution Number four-six-six-nine for the twenty-twenty-six collective bargaining agreement between the city of Pasco and the International Association of Firefighters Local Fourteen-Thirty-Three. This agreement will cover the, just next year, so it's only a year-long contract and was ratified by the union membership on the seventeenth of September. Negotiations were productive and collaborative, and they concluded with a tentative agreement on the fifteenth of August. Some key updates to the contract, there was a three-percent base wage increase that'll be effective January first. Additionally, there's a hundred and ten-dollar monthly city contribution into an employee health reimbursement account. There's gonna be new vacation and sick leave cash-out provisions that provide flexibility and long-term planning options for employees. And most importantly, there's clarification on our medical Article nineteen-point-one, which now aligns medical coverage with our plan summary plan description. This resolves a prior ambiguity that had placed the city at significant financial risk for out-of-pocket claims, I'm sorry, out-of-network claims. The overall fiscal impact for twenty-twenty-six is estimated to be about one-point-two-seven-seven million, representing a nine-point-two-one percent increase to the fire department labor costs. This is higher than normal increase, primarily reflects the correction to that article that I just mentioned, Article nineteen-point-one, which previously required the city to pay all out-of-network claims at a hundred percent. That language, combined with a grievance settlement, had exposed the city's self-funded medical plan to unlimited and potentially fraudulent out-of-network costs. The revised contract language now aligns with our SPD, protecting the plan's financial integrity moving forward. Because of these negotiated changes and related benefit cost adjustments, staff will be bringing forward amid biennial budget amendment to account for the additional twenty-twenty-six fire labor expenses. Ratification of this agreement provides clarity, stability, and financial safeguards heading into twenty-twenty-six. I provided some options in the agenda report, and I was very silly because I don't have my computer on me and don't have it in front of me, but I am recommending that council approve and ratify the I F F twenty-twenty-six contract. I believe the other options, if I can recall, to summarize, if we don't ratify, they are interest ARB group, and we would ultimately end up in interest ARB, and the risk would then be the decision of the arbiter. Or we can take this and to another council meeting to discuss further if we need to discuss this. And I'm gonna conclude by taking a moment to recognize Pat. Pat's job, to be perfectly honest, is one of the most difficult jobs. He's a strong advocate for his members and consistently brings their priorities forward with professionalism and persistence, while still working collaboratively with the city to find fair and sustainable solutions. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat.
Thank you, guys. I wanna thank Sarah and Chief Crowley. Our negotiations are always, you know, they're negotiations, right? We know how those goes. I will say, I've only been here eight and a half years, but I'll say, from, from my perspective and my body's perspective, this is, we feel like we, this was the most equal. We've always been taken care of, and you guys have always given us everything. We feel this one, we're, we're pretty fifty-fifty, so that's kind of how it should be, for some reason. It hasn't been that way here, and I'm happy to say it hasn't been that way here. But I wanna thank them. It's, you know, having your guys' support as well has been great. Working, you know, Dave's last time with us, you know, look forward to working with Mr. Stewart here. I'm not, because I'm, I'm done with the union after the end of this year, so I'm not going anywhere, but time to retire from union stuff for a while. My wife said it's time to retire, so. So I wanna thank you guys for the consideration, and like I said, thanks Sarah and Chief Crowley for, for working collaboratively with us. And I think, I think this is a fair contract on both sides, so thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank you for that presentation. Do we have any members of the council that would like to have a question or comment? I'm not seeing any, but I do know you guys do an amazing job, and probably one of my best things on council I've ever had the opportunity of doing was going out to the Training Center and being a fireman for a couple of days. And I came home one time in the whole outfit and surprised my wife, but I don't think she was too soon. Wasn't, wasn't like you see in the movies where the women are totally gung-ho that you're in a fireman's outfit, so. Well, that's the truth. So anyway, I guess a little embarrassing story there. Anyway, since I'm not seeing any questions, can I get, I'm embarrassed. Can I get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim?
Yes, sir. I would like to move to approve Resolution Number four-six-six-nine, approving the January first, twenty-twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six collective bargaining agreement between the city of Pasco and Local Number One-Four-Three-Three International Association of Firefighters.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, all those opposed say nay. Looks like that passes unanimously, so thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Much appreciated. All right, so we're gonna move on to number ten, unfinished business. I'm not seeing any, so we're gonna move to eleven. New business, and not seeing any, so we'll move on to twelve, miscellaneous discussion. And I did have something before we hear from our city manager that basically is kind of a thing that about our city boards and commission vacancies, kind of announcement that the city is seeking qualified applications for positions on the following boards and commissions. The Art and Culture Commission currently has three vacancies, two for art professionals and one for an artist. The following boards, commissions will have openings in January of twenty-twenty-six. The Planning Commission will have two open positions. Code Enforcement Board will have one open position, and Civil Service Commission will have one opening. If you're interested in applying for one of these positions, contact the city clerk's office at five oh nine, five four four, thirty ninety-six, or go online to the city of Pasco's website and select government and select board and commissions. And we appreciate anybody that would like to get involved and make a difference in their community. And please submit your applications by November third to be considered in the first round of candidates. So with that, let's go on to our city manager, Harold Stewart.
Good day to you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few things to cover this evening. The first one would be if there's any questions on the report that's prepared and in the agenda. This will be the second one, so in the month of October, you should have received a report from all department heads with regards to projects, and those will be updated in future reports as well in the coming months. But first and foremost, if you have any questions on anything outlined in the city manager's report.
Anybody have any?
I think we're good with that. Okay, just a public announcement that on Wednesday, the twenty-second, at one-thirty PM, we'll have a Business Watch meeting, which will be located at the Franklin County Historical Museum. So we invite everyone to come out to that. And then the last meeting, the Parks Director and I talked about the upcoming Fourth of July, and, and we talked about getting feedback from council at this meeting because we need to be able to order supplies and potentially enter into contracts quickly with regards to that. So I think Jesse and I would entertain any feedback the council would have right now over your ponderings over the last couple of weeks with regards to what you would like to do for the, I won't, I won't pronounce whatever, sesquicentennial, whatever that celebration is, that was coming up on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary birthday of, of the United States, so, but we would like any feedback the council would have at this time.
All right, well, let's start off with Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think America's worth celebrating, and so, yes, I would be with what you guys had in mind. Thank you. America's definitely worth celebrating.
All right, well, I love that comment as well, so let's go on to Councilwoman Blaisdell.
I agree as well. My only question, I don't remember if you gave this information at last meeting, how much do we normally spend?
So for the last several years, we spent thirty thousand dollars a year for a twenty-minute fireworks show. So the increase this year uh is going to be about six thousand dollars and take that same show to about thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
All right. Is that uh enough feedback, or you want more in-depth, or?
I think that's great on the fireworks option as far as maintaining the traditional length of show and style that we have out at the Keyston Center. I guess the next question would be, is there any additional items or or areas I could research or bring to you about expanding for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth uh anniversary? And what those items might be, whether that's additional entertainment or drone show or anything along those lines to help better, uh you know, better celebrate next year being the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. And if we're not quite ready for that question, we can come back again in a following week, or or we can look at, see what some other cities might be doing as well.
I mean, yeah, if you could send us maybe some uh to the whole council, send us some ideas. I know sometimes like last year at Keyston Stadium, it seemed like the neighborhood was competing against uh the city firework display, which is a little shocking. Uh so maybe if we do a drone show, I doubt the residents around there could uh compete with that, but uh other ideas, I'm all for it. Uh I'd like it to be spectacular, um if at all possible, without breaking the bank.
Okay, I'll query our recreation team and see if they have any ideas, and we'll get those submitted to you uh through the city manager.
Thank you, it's great. All right. Well, appreciate the report there, so let's move on to exec session. And I assume we still do have the exec session. It's a long night. So I assume we should probably take like a seven-minute break, just for the ease of my math. So that would get us at nine twenty. The exec session is to consider site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood will disclose uh would increase price per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, subsection B, and it says fifteen minutes, so.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like the staff would like to request reduce that to ten minutes instead of fifteen.
Of ten minutes, okay.
Yeah.
So if we take a break for nine twenty, and then so that would bring us back to nine thirty. So all good with that? All right, we are now in exec session.